I'd like to call the June 14th of 2016 meeting as the Salem Kaiser School Board to order. Welcome, everybody. I'm sorry for the late start. We had an executive session that went a little later than we had planned. So please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Rick Kimball.
Here.
Paul Kylo.
Here.
Chris Brantley.
Here.
Marty Hyon.
Here.
Mr. Green is not with us this evening. Chuck Lee.
Here.
Nancy McMorris-Ottox.
Here.
Thank you, Kristi. For agenda modifications, we have none tonight, so let's move right into it. First, we have Spotlight on Success. Superintendent Perry.
Good evening. Our first spotlight will be presented by Jay Reamy, our Director of Community Relations and Communications.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, Chair Kimball, and members of the board. I'd like to invite West Salem High School Principal Ken Phillips to come forward, along with Jeff Lewis, Member Services Manager for Salem Electric. If you'll just join the board chair over here. So Salem Electric is our Business Partner of the Month for June. They were nominated by school staff on behalf of three of our schools in West Salem: Chapman Hill, Walker Middle School, and West Salem High. Jeff Lewis is Member Services Manager. Salem Electric has been a business partner with our West Salem schools for many years. Though monetary contributions are always welcome, Salem Electric staff are also very active in our schools. Chapman Hill Principal Rachel Harms writes that Salem Electric is an exceptional partner in education. They provide safety lessons for students on electricity issues, they participate in student reading programs, are a regular sponsor of the Jog-a-thon, provide funding for Chapman Hill's volunteer luncheon, and even hang student art for the school's annual family art night. Walker Middle School Principal Bridget Weldon says Salem Electric is an outstanding business partner to not just Walker Middle School, but the whole West Salem community. They have helped fund various projects at Walker, ranging from large banners to displays of attendance and academic performance data, to T-shirts for student athletes. Salem Electric staff have gone above and beyond in helping clean up any debris discovered near the school. And Ken Phillips, West Salem High Principal, reports that Salem Electric was a partner with them long before the school's doors opened in the fall of 2002. Salem Electric came to the school with a plan to put solar panels on the roof to use for energy as well as for educational purposes. Salem Electric is always there for West Salem High School when they are in need of something. They have been an essential partner to the schools in helping with needs that are a little more than the basics. So thank you to Salem Electric for your ongoing support of our district. Thank you.
Our next spotlight is going to be presented by Mary Lou Boderman, our Coordinator for the District Music and Drama. And I think the few things we're highlighting tonight are the short list of many things we could highlight. So thank you for your leadership of our music programs.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, and also Chair Kimball. This year marked the 30th anniversary of the OSAA State Music Championships. During that time, Salem Kaiser students have been awarded more championships than all other 6A school districts combined. This is an accomplishment that demonstrates the outstanding teaching that is taking place throughout our district, not only at the high school level, but at the middle school level as well, and begins in our elementary schools, where all of our students are taught by trained music specialists beginning in kindergarten. Tonight, we want to highlight, and honor, and congratulate our fabulous music students and staff who have placed in various music competitions throughout the year. Unfortunately, some of them are not able to be with us tonight, but we certainly will mention them anyway. First of all, in the middle school competitions, the Best of the Northwest Choir Competition that was held on May 6th at the University of Portland, first place went to Walker Middle School, directed by Becca Holland; second place, Judson Middle School, directed by David Looney; fifth place, Crossler Middle School, directed by Rob Harrison; and sixth place was Straub Middle School, directed by Ryan Amon. The Pleasant Hill Jazz Festival at Pleasant Hill High School, Junior High Division, was first place, Judson Middle School, directed by David Looney; third place was Straub Middle School, directed by Ryan Amon; and Judson's Middle Schools' Gracie Fredenberg received an Outstanding Soloist Award. In the same competition, on the instrumental side, third place went to Judson Middle School that's directed by Matt Palasic. The Claggett Creek Middle School Jazz Band placed second at the Skyview Jazz Festival. They are directed by Danny Hunt. And in the West Salem Jazz Festival, the Straub Middle School Jazz Band, directed by Jamie Hall, placed second; and the Judson Middle School Jazz Band, again directed by Matt Palasic, placed third in the Advanced Middle School Division. In our high schools.
So how about if you introduce your middle school directors?
And I don't think we have any. Do we have any middle school folks? See, that's why I was rushing through.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Okay, but we do have some high school folks. But before I introduce the staff, I do want to mention some of our fabulous soloists, because at the OSAA State Championship for solo music, we did have five of our high school students that placed first. They were Phoebe Jacobs, placed first in alto voice. She is from West Salem. Zari Cryer was first in bass voice. He's from South Salem. Mezzo Voice Champion was Olga Melendez Valdez from North Salem High School. Bassoon was Sam Roten from West High School, and he was joined by Brandon Presley from West, who was the state champion on orchestral snare. So great job from our students. Many of those were seniors, and I am told that they are gone. Anyway.
Can't blame them.
In the Large Group Ensemble Competition at State, and we do have some representatives here this evening. In the 6A Choir Championships, first place went to South Salem High School, directed by Will McLean. Will? Second place went to West Salem High School, directed by Kimberly McConnell; and third place, Spreg High School, directed by David Brown. And they are unable to be with us tonight. However, Ken is here, and you could stand up, because he certainly supports folks at West Salem.
He's fucking at it.[498.18][498.18](applause)
In the String Orchestra Division, second place went to West Salem High School, directed Fourth place in that division went to Spreg High School, directed by Stephen Nelson. I suppose George, yeah, you might as well stay there, right? In the Full Symphony Division, first place, West Salem High School, co-directed by George Thompson and also Todd Zimbalman. Third place in this division went to McKay High School, co-directed by J.J. Meyer and Sean Williams. And this was exciting, because this was the very first year that we had a symphony orchestra at McKay High School. So quite an accomplishment for them. In the 6A Band Championships, Todd, don't go too far, first place was West Salem High School, directed by Todd Zimbalman. This is the seventh championship win in a row for West. West Salem also made history by earning a perfect sight-reading score of 60. In this difficult portion of the competition, bands play a piece of music they've never seen. West's perfect score was the first in the championship's 30-year history. Bravo to And third place in this division went to McNary High School's band, directed by Jennifer Bell. Last, but certainly, certainly not least, every year, the Oregon Symphony Association in Salem awards a Music Educator of the Year Award. And this year, it was emphasized for elementary. And it's my great pleasure to introduce, from Four Corners Elementary, our winner this year, who is a wonderful music educator. Please congratulate Anissa Rodriguez-Farugi. It is with great delight and pride that we applaud our excellent music teachers and talented students for their outstanding accomplishments. Congratulations, and thank
Next on our agenda is Audience Communications, and we have one person signed up to speak. Mindy Merritt, if you could approach the podium. We have a time limit of three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Chairperson Rick Kimball, Vice Chair Paul Kylo, and Salem Kaiser School Board. My name is Mindy Merritt. I'm the SKEA President. And my address is 2381 Teal Drive, Southeast Salem, 97306. I'm here before you to encourage you to vote in favor of the Memorandum of Understanding between the Salem Kaiser School District and our association. If approved, this agreement would allow our members the opportunity to maintain relative financial stability while creating competitive compensation to attract educators to our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Okay, that's the only person who signed up to speak, so let's move on to our action items. And we have several tonight. We'll start with the Valley Inquiry Charter Renewal, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Perry.
All right. First item under action is the Valley Inquiry Charter School tonight. This was, is up, expires on June 30th, 2016. And you had, you did receive the request in time for us to negotiate a new contract with them. This is similar to the contracts we negotiated and you voted on last time. We have a five-year contract maintaining the 85% ADM. We have a number of updates throughout the document that you saw. It's also available online. We've deleted some outdated language, and we've changed contracted services that were in Exhibit C to reflect a little more accurately how we proceed. It's our recommendation tonight that you approve the charter contract as revised for the Valley Inquiry Charter School for a five-year term beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2021.
Motion. So moved by Nancy, a second?
A second.
Second by Chuck. Any questions regarding this charter renewal? Clarifying or discussion? Okay, see none. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the recommendation of staff that the charter renewal be, go forward as written. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Same sign for no?
Aye.
So we've got 5-1. And motion passes. Okay, next item on our agenda is the adoption of, and appropriation of the 2016-17 budget resolutions. And I'm going to go ahead and take it from here. We've got several resolutions to go through. If you want to go ahead and give some, you want to give some background?
Let's just give some quick background. The Budget Committee received the budget message on April 26th. We held a couple of public meetings and a work session, but we held our public hearings on May 16th and 17th to receive testimony. The Budget Committee did approve the budget at that time, and our hearing is tonight and fulfills a legal requirement to receive testimony on the approved budget and to take action. There have been no changes to the, from approved to adopted budget, and we're moving forward with this as a recommendation.
Thank you, Kristi. We mentioned a public hearing tonight. We don't have it on the schedule of the hearing, so I am going to open a public hearing on the school budget. Do we, do we need to do that or not? Counsel, do you have an opinion? Okay. So we now have a open session, public hearing on the budget. Is there any testimony regarding the budget from the community? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on the budget. And we'll move on to the resolutions. Okay, we've got four resolutions we're going to go through tonight. The first resolution allocates a portion of the 2014-15 and the 2015-16 May adjustments into the special revenue and the Capital Projects Fund. The remaining three resolutions: adopt the budget, appropriate the budget, and impose and categorize taxes. We will take action on each resolution in order that I just described, starting with the resolution on the May adjustment, and then we'll move on from there. So I'm going to read through each resolution first, and then look for a motion, and then we'll have discussion and a vote, okay? So the first one is a resolution to utilize the 2014-15 and the 2015-16 May adjustments, State School Fund General Purpose Grant in fiscal years 2016, in the fiscal year 2016-17. Whereas ORS 327 dash, or .099, and 327 point 101 defines the allocation of adjustment of the State School General Fund Purpose Grant within the current fiscal year 2015-16 and the prior fiscal year 2014-15, here and after referred to as a May adjustment. And whereas the Board of Directors for the Salem Kaiser School District 24J slash 32, as the highest level of decision-making authority, may commit fund bounce to a specific purpose. And whereas the Government Accounting Standards Board 54 requires that the funding be not unassigned in order to be placed in certain designated governmental funds. And whereas District Policy ADM A001 allows the superintendent to recommend to the school board that a portion or all of the May adjustment be utilized in separate accounts for budgetary issues. And whereas the district has determined a need for replacing and upgrading infrastructure in the form of capital projects, vehicle replacements, and technology, therefore be resolved that the Board of Directors of the Salem Kaiser School District 24J slash 32, Marion slash Polk Counties, Oregon hereby commits a portion of the May adjustment funding from fiscal year 2014-15 and 2015-16 to other designated funds in the amount of $3,100,000 as follows. $1,500,000 in the asset replacement fund for A., $1 million for technology enhancements, and B., $500,000 for vehicle replacements. And number two, $1,600,000 in the Special Capital Projects Fund for the purpose of, for the purchase of the Commercial Street property. The above resolution, whoops, I don't need to read the next part. So that's the resolution to have a motion. Move for approval?
Second.
Move for approval? Second by Paul, and a motion by Nancy. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? See none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same sign? Okay, it's unanimous. We have a 6-0 vote. Second resolution. This is a resolution adopting budget for fiscal year 2016-17. Be it resolved that the Board of Directors for the Salem Kaiser School District 24J slash 32, Marion slash Polk Counties, Oregon hereby adopts the budget for 2016-17 fiscal year in the sum of $677,547,775, now on file at the school district's Lancaster Professional Center Executive Administrative Office, Suite 202, 2550 Lancaster Drive Northeast, Salem, Oregon. So that's the motion for this resolution. We have a motion, motion by Paul for, second by Nancy. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Nancy?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Budget Committee for their work in deliberating the budget. And I think we had some good conversations, and I'm glad that we're able to move it forward.
Thank you, Nancy. So we have a motion, a second. Chuck?
I guess I'd like to echo Nancy's comments. I think sometimes it looks like we kind of lightly just approve these budgets, but I think for people watching on TV and elsewhere, this has been the result of a lot of long meetings and a lot of work by the Budget Committee. And so tonight, we're here, but we're not taking this lightly. It's been the result of a lot of, a lot of work by staff, a lot of work by the Budget Committee, and a lot of deliberation, which you're not seeing tonight. But I just want to clarify that.
Nancy, go ahead.
I commented on the Budget Committee and really realized that I was in remiss not commenting on the staff participation. Mike and his department and their work getting the budget ready, and I think also quite a lot of work by Mary Paulson in helping to get the whole budget prepared, and questions answered for the Budget Committee so that we could have those deliberations. So thank you for that work as well.
Thanks, Chuck and Nancy. Anything else from anybody? Okay, we have a motion and a second on resolution adopting a budget for next school year. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Same sign for opposition? Okay, it's unanimous. We have a 6-0 vote on that. Okay, this is a resolution making appropriations for fiscal year 2016-17. Now, we're going to take that $677,000 and divide it up. Be it resolved that the amounts for the fiscal year begin in July 1, 2016, and for the purposes shown below are hereby appropriated as follows. And what I'm going to go off of is the names of the funds and the total amount of dollars in each fund. First of all, we have the General Fund, and the appropriation there is for
$463 million.
You're right. $463 million, $675,386. Thank you, Nancy. For the special revenue funds, there are several sub-funds there, but the total for the special revenue fund is $83,884,733. Next is the Debt Service Fund, which includes our PERS debt, as well as our general obligation bond debt. There, the total for the Debt Service Fund is $47,405,77. Next is the Capital Projects Funds. And under this fund, we have $20,434,379. $20,434,379. Enterprise Fund, we have $995,342. Internal Services Funds, we have $34,827,271. And lastly, for the Trust Fund... I'll repeat it for you.
Neil wants it repeated.[1423.71][1423.71](laughter)
For the Internal Services Funds, we have $34,827,271. Is that okay? Sorry? All right. Trust Fund is $330,000, $330,000, for a total of $651,547,948. So, folks, oop, I missed one.
You keep going.
Then we have the unappropriated and reserve amounts, where we have another $25,999,827, for a total of $677 plus change. So those are the amounts in each of the funds.
Move approval?
Moved by Nancy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Marty. Any questions on distribution? Marty?
It's not really on distribution. I was just curious, was that Siri or Cortana speaking to us?[1477.42][1477.42](laughter)
I don't know.
All right. So we have the breakdown into funds, and we have a motion and a second. All in favor of these numbers and disbursement, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposition? Same sign? Okay, we have a 6-0 vote there. Okay, one more. This is a resolution imposing and categorizing taxes for the fiscal year 2016 and 17. Be it resolved that the Board of Directors for the Salem Kaiser School District 24J slash 32, Marion slash Polk Counties, Oregon hereby imposes the taxes provided for in the adopted budget at the rate of $4.52.1 cents per $1,000 of assessed value for operations, and in the amount of $33,990,211 for bonds, and that these taxes are hereby imposed and categorized for the tax year 2016-17 upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district. So that's the General Fund, Education taxes, $4.52.1 cents per 1,000. And then Debt Service Fund is excluded from the limitation of $23,824,757. So that's our categorization of taxes, that we will tax on property. We have a motion.
Move adoption.
Moved by Nancy?
Second.
Second by Marty. Any questions here, discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposition? Same sign. Okay, it's unanimous, 6-0. Thank you, Board, for going through those with me, and I want to echo what Chuck and Nancy have said. Thanks to Budget Committee for all their hard work, and certainly to the staff for all the effort they put in to get this year's budget together, and through the committee, and wrapped up, and put away as of tonight, as it appears. So thank you. All right, so that covers that action item. Next, we have the purchase of property at Commercial Street. I'll send this over to Superintendent Perry.
All right, this is your second time to see this. But back in June of 2015, you took action to authorize us to enter into a lease with the option to purchase the commercial, the property at 1115 Commercial Street Northeast. It's a 1.3-acre property, one-story commercial building, approximately 21,000 square feet. It currently is home to Sophomore Connections, Literacy Center, and Salem Kaiser Online, and it will be the home in the fall of four of our community transition programs, which are special ed programs that provide services for students 18 to 21 years old. At the direction of the Board, the staff has negotiated a purchase price with the owners of the property, Truett Brothers LLC, of $2.625 million. And accordance with the terms of the purchase option included in the lease, approximately $77,000 of the district's lease payment will be applied towards a purchase price based on August 1, 2016 closing date. The school board has set aside $1.1 million from the sale of Middle Grove Elementary School to purchase this property, and the remainder will come from our May adjustment, which you just noted in one of your approvals tonight. So our recommendation at this point is that you approve the purchase of the property located at 1115 Commercial Street Northeast.
So moved.
Moved by Director Kylo, or Vice Chair Kylo? Second by Chuck. I saw his signal there. Okay, if we have any discussion or deliberations, I'm going to be declaring a potential conflict of interest. I won't be participating in the vote or the discussion, but anybody have any clarifying questions or discussion on the item? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the recommendation of staff for the purchase of the property on Commercial Street. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign for nay? And I abstain, so it's 5-0 with one abstention.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Nancy.
I just want to point out that when we started talking about the sale of Middle Grove, Ron Jones was on this board, and he was very much committed to finding a permanent home for the community transitions students and their programs. And so I feel really pleased that tonight we're able to do that.
Thanks for bringing that up, Nancy. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, let's move on to the Memorandum of Understanding. Superintendent Perry?
This is the negotiated Memorandum of Understanding between Salem Kaiser Public Schools and Salem Kaiser Education Association. This MOU increases their cost of living by 1.75% for the 16-17 school year, and a $35 per month increase... 1.75 percent for the 16-17 school year, and a $35 per month increase over this year on their health insurance cap, which puts their cap at $1,220 per month for the health insurance. As I understand it, it has been ratified by SKEA.
Okay, we have a recommendation from staff to approve this memorandum of understanding. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Paul. Second, second by Chris. Any discussion or comments regarding this memorandum? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding between district staff and the classified association. All in, oops, excuse me.
This is the license.
License Association, I'm sorry. All in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposition, same sign? Okay, we have a unanimous six zero. Thank you. Okay, next we have, that's all our action items tonight. We have our adoption of consent calendar. And here we usually approve all the consent calendar in one motion unless a board member wants to pull any items out of the grant budgets, or personnel actions, or administrative personnel actions, or resolutions on granting fiscal authority. Anybody need to pull anything tonight? Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to adopt a complete consent calendar. So moved by Nancy. I have a second somewhere?
Second.
Second by Marty. All in favor of adoption, say aye?
Right.
Aye? Opposition, same sign? All right, it's unanimous. That was all ayes, right?
Could I just make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead Chris.
I just wanted to say for the audience that there's an extensive list of new hires. These guys have really been on the ball. They're, these are all folks for next year. So, we're getting way ahead of that game.
Good, thanks for bringing that up Chris. All right. That covers our consent calendar. Next on the agenda are readings, and tonight we have one reading, and it's regarding the superintendent's contract. Oregon revised statute 342.509 requires the district to enter into an employment contract with superintendent's, deputy, and assistant superintendents. The attached contract outlines the specific details of employment for Superintendent Perry. Changes from the prior contract with, with the school board, with the school board include, number one, the superintendent's salary has been updated to reflect her current salary. Number two, an increase to the superintendent's base salary at the same percentage rate for the step increases for other district administrators, which is 4 percent. That has been added. The superintendent will continue to receive the same COLA as other Salem Kaiser administrators. And number three, revisions have been made in order to clarify the timeframe for renewal of the superintendent's contract. So those, those adjustments have been made. Vice Chair Kylo and I have met about the contract. We've met with council about the contract. I have had some discussions with Christie about, you know, where we want to, want to go in the future, and I think this contract pretty matches, pretty much matches what she'd like to do. So, the contract states the words, but I've got a little chart here I made that Christie's going to pass out. It helps give you a comparison of the current contract the superintendent has with three other districts. That would be Portland, which is obviously bigger than ours, Beaverton, which is slightly smaller, and Eugene. So the top, the top chart on this piece of paper, which includes the four districts, was, was the current contracts as of the end of, end of May, mid-June. Going through those contracts, and the way they were worded, you can see the Portland superintendent, right now is at a base pay of $247. And going into 16-17 year, she has a TSA of $30,000 for TSA is like an annuity for retirement, okay? What's the acronym?
Tax sheltered.
Tax sheltered annuity.
Which is not PERS, correct?
Correct, it is not PERS. Portland does not pick up any of the PERS costs for the superintendent though, so it's zero on this chart. But their superintendent for the next school year will have a total pay of $277. Salem Kaiser School District, which is the second biggest in the state, with the current contract that's in place, not talking about the one we're introducing tonight, in the, during next year, year, the superintendent would have a base pay of $192,300, and TSA of $21,000, and then a PERS amount of 6 percent. What I don't have in there is the COLA that any of these people would receive, okay? The base pay is without the COLA added in, okay? But I didn't add it, add it in on either district. So we'd have our superintendent at $224,800. Beaverton contract, this was the contract that their former superintendent was under, who has left the district and gone on to the East Coast for a job. During this next school year, that superintendent's pay, base pay would have been $200,800, with a TSA of $16,000, for a total of $216,800. Their district is a couple thousand less than ours, according to, or 100, 1,000 less than ours in students. And then Eugene in 16-17, and that's a fairly new contract also. This is a new superintendent, I believe, the second year of the contract's coming up. Base is $185. There is a longevity pay with this, this superintendent, 5 percent each year that they're there, a TSA of, which is $9,250, a TSA of $6,000 for next year, then a PERS, PERS amount, also 6 percent of $11,100, for a total of $211,350. So this little chart, if you look at 16-17, compares the four districts and where, where we sit compared to other districts. And the reason I present this is, staff brings to us many times over the years, salary schedules for all, most of the roles in, in the district. They're required to set up salary schedules for every job, and we, we look at data occasionally comparing our, our salary schedules for some roles to other districts. When things are out of line, adjustments are made. So this is kind of the same strategy, for us to look at the data comparing our superintendency with other districts, and see if we're keeping up with the Joneses or not, and where we lie. That's what's current. The next two boxes below, Salem Kaiser proposed, this is what we've outlined in this contract that's coming forward tonight. We're suggesting a 4 percent step increase that happens every year of the contract be instituted, and the TSA be increased to $21,000, which is already the case. Our current contract with the superintendent always, already raises to that. So this current year, we would be at $232,900, or $233,000 for our superintendency. And you can compare that to the 16-17 year and the other superintenities to get a feel for that, on how we fit with the others. Now, the new news, as of last night, is the bottom chart. As you may know, Beaverton just hired a new superintendent last night, and that superintendent's contract is laid out right there for you. For 16-17, their base is $265, with a TSA of $265, for a total of $291,500. So we have a new top of the chart. Okay, Beaverton is now ahead of Portland, so... This gives us a picture of how we compare the other districts. So, this is part of the assessment we need to do as a board to decide whether it's the strategy we want to use to, to move our superintendency up the pay rate, a valid one or not. This is to give you a feel for how we compare to others. Now, some things I want to point out, on the Beaverton contract, there is a retention clause in the former contract and the current one, where if that superintendent stays for three years, after that third year, they get a 7 percent retention bonus of the current salary for that year, okay? But they have to stay the three years to get it. To pick on the former contract at Beaverton, Jeff Rose only stayed one year under that contract, so he didn't get any of this retention bonus, because he didn't stay the three years. So that's the background that I have of why we're bringing a change forward in the contract for our superintendency. Go ahead Marty.
Time for comments or questions? Well, I think it's very important to hang on to quality employees, and also, you know, you do need to look at the cost of living here versus Beaverton is much different. And I'm certainly in favor of what you have proposed for Christie. I think she deserves it.
Well, tonight is the first reading. We won't take action for two weeks, so any questions or discussion around? Chris?
I had the advantage, folks, of being in on the agenda planning last week, so I've been thinking about this for about a week, and I think I could argue what, either way. I think, as I, as I look at the salary that we are currently paying, and the other districts, like districts, there's no doubt in my mind that we need to up the salary. It's the mechanism that, I could argue either way. Tying a step increase to the other administrators' salaries could provide the perverse incentive of negotiating a higher COLA in deference to something else going on in the contract negotiation, so that that number gets bumped up. I don't think that would happen under this superintendent, but it could happen under another one. And so putting the precedent in there of tying that COLA in there, not tied to, to anything, could bother me. I don't know that it does bother me. It's just something that I don't think we should do as a board without proper deliberation. So I just wanted to bring up that, that as you look at the other contracts, this is totally new. It's different. Most districts in the United States don't do this, and this is something we would be breaking ground to do. And so I thought it, it's important that we really take a moment to, to look at it and say, is it really what we ought to do? Again, as I say, I, I think we need to increase the salary. I think we need to get her competitive. I'm just questioning the process, or how we're deciding to do this. I'm not sure how to get more information on it, or what its possible ramifications could be, but I'm just questioning.
Paul?
I was going to say, we have to, we as a board have to approve the salary increases. So she couldn't, she couldn't increase it on her own without us knowing about it, because that would be a violation of policy of law, and that would be a dismissible offense. So I don't have that concern after I looked into it.
Marty, are you?
And we can always change the contract.
Right, yeah, and it's my understanding that we redo the contract every year, even though it's for three years. So, this could still change again any year.
That's right.
But this is our good faith where we want to go.
That's correct. Nancy?
In looking at this, did you consider the longevity or retention approach that other districts have had? It looks like Eugene, they started it right off the bat, and Beaverton waits a couple years to put it in, versus doing, doing the step increase?
Didn't look at that very hard. The step increase, I think we landed there, because that's, that's what all the other positions in the district have available to them, is a step increase. Every, every job category we have in a district has some increments in it, and this is kind of in the same, same mode. Okay, Marty?
And being a former state worker, and you had step one through seven or eight, I can't remember, it's been a while, do we have a cap for the number of steps that we would go, or are we saying it's an unlimited 4 percent every year? I mean, what's the idea, even though I know that the contract can change every year?
That's exactly why there's not a cap in there, because the board can change, can change the contract on a renewal, on the renewal, okay, and change that, okay? If after four years, we think it's gone too high, and we want to cap it, then we change the contract.
Okay.
So...
So there's no...
There's no creation...
No idea, or no limitation that's being discussed at this time for step increases?
Yep. The limit right now with this contract would be three years, if it's approved, would be a way to look at it. Any other questions or discussion tonight? Chris?
It would help me, I guess, in terms of my question earlier, if, if somebody could do a little research, maybe with Oregon School, or with National School Boards Association, and try to find out the answer to, why is it that districts don't do this? I've always, I've, I've noticed this happened with superintendents for years, and that is that districts tend to try to negotiate a new superintendent in at a salary that they like, because they know that it's probably not going to change for four or five years at, at a minimum, and that there's every chance in the world that they're going to have that salary the whole time they're in that district, and they're going to move on to another district. That's sort of the way things have operated over the years. So the question that I, I would ask is why? Why don't districts put something in their contracts that allow this kind of bump every year? I wish I knew the answer to that. If I knew it, I'd share it. And it's, the question that I tried to say earlier is, we're going to be unique if we do this. Why are we unique in doing it this way? Because it seems logical to me, too, that you would do the same thing with your superintendent you would do with your other employees. So, that's the question really, is why, why does the world operate the way it does everywhere but here?
Well, it's possible if we lay the groundwork, you know, we, we do this type of a contract, and maybe be the first ones to have done it. Maybe it'll, it could help set a standard where we don't have the skyrocketing contracts that we have. I guess would be the best way I could say it.
I have no problem with that, as long as we know why others don't.
Well, if we can...
I would ask the leadership to see if you could find out an answer to that question. If you can't, you can't.
Okay, Marty?
You mean like, you're not sure if there's some sort of unforeseen issue for doing it? Is that what you're trying to...
Why is it that districts all over the United States operate the way they do?
Do they know something we don't know?
Yeah. That's what worries me.
Counsel, you got any opinion on that?
Well...
Based on what you've seen over the year?
I think that there are variations in Oregon contracts. I've done a lot of Oregon contracts, and there have been districts who've tied a compensation bonus with performance. And the board evaluates performance, and, and then there's a salary increase. There's contracts that have this salary for this year, and we're going to increase it by a certain percent, so we're going to put this next salary at the second year, and it's, it's all lined out in the, in the contract. So, I mean, from my perspective, this is simply another way of expressing a salary increase. It's a three-year contract. If you get ready to renew the contract, and you don't like this method, for whatever reason, you can negotiate another method, or, or, or different salaries. But I, I don't think there's anything intrinsically negative about, it's just a way to calculate an increase. You could use another metric to increase, to calculate an increase, and you're, you're still left with the same kind of contract. It escalates over a period of three years, and you're just choosing to say, here's how we're going to measure that.
And it, and the rate we have here, the current rate of the administrators, which is 4 percent, even, it escalates it, but it doesn't even come, after those three years, you'll notice, we don't even come close to where Beaverton will be in three years, and where Portland will be in three years. Closer to Portland than we are now, because hers is fixed, but that could change in the next few years. So, Paul, did you have something you wanted?
I was just going to say, it's, my experience in the 150 districts I worked with, it was, it's a function of the relationship between the board and the superintendent, because sometimes the superintendents, like the occasional bump every three to five years, as they get closer to retirement, or leaving, and that's what they want. And we have a, a mature organization here, where we have systems and processes in place, and that's what it is. And the superintendent tends to be the only at-will person that we can really boss around the most. But under our current governance model, that's not really the case anymore. So in my mind, this type of system makes more sense. So, that's where I, that's where I, my experience is.
Chuck?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the Chair and Vice Chair for coming up with this. You know, you can arbitrarily just come up with a number and say, this is what we want the superintendent to do. But this is based on facts, this is based on data, and I think that there's a, a lot to be said for putting the superintendent on the same, the same schedule as other administrators within the district. Not that we can't deviate from that, but I thought you guys did a good job of looking at what other comparable districts are doing, and coming up with something that makes sense. And so, good job.
Thanks Chuck. Any other discussion or comments tonight? Okay, we're going to have a, in two weeks, the plan is to have a special meeting, last meeting of the year, and we'll take up... meeting of the year, and we'll take up final action on this, on this contract. And also, we have a couple other items that night, so. For right now, the 28th is set as a meeting, is that, is everybody planning on being in town? Because I want to have everyone there for this vote, so. Jim has told me he will be here already. Everybody else will be here? 28th? Two weeks? Okay. So we will have that special meeting, okay? And that takes us to reports. We have two tonight. Monitoring report on EL 12, and, which is actually the easiest one to do, and report on 2016 graduation.
All right, so this is the last of our 12 monitoring reports scheduled for the 15-16 school year, and this is the monitoring report related to legally required policies. These are the list of the legally required policies, but I want you to notice on the second page that we did make some substantial changes to the following policies, and most of them were a result of some legislative changes. So on INS A013, teen dating violence, we add new language to align with new legislation regarding domestic violence, which requires the district to communicate with parents and post notices in schools. On HUM-A031, evaluation license, we've removed our outdated language related to performance standards, and added language to align our evaluation systems with legends. And then the third one was to revise the policy to meet district needs. HUMP-P006, personnel records, general, update the policy by adding language regarding electronic records. There were a number of other policy changes that came about as a result of legislative changes that aren't legally required policies that you'd need to be notified about. So there were no evidences of non-compliance.
Okay, the executive limitation reports are part of our evaluation. I'll look for consensus with this adequate report tonight. Everybody feel comfortable here? Okay. We have consensus, and thank you, everybody. Next item, graduation.
Next is our graduation report for 2016. I think each of you had the opportunity to attend one or more graduations. The, each of the high schools is listed with their number of graduates, or there are, in some cases, students who received certificates of completions or modified diplomas. In addition, we had 102 students complete their GED through Roberts High School, and we've received a number of comments, especially regarding our Roberts High School graduation, in the fact that these students could easily have been students who did not obtain a high school diploma or GED. And so I think that's a really big shout-out to Roberts and the work that they do, because we're committed to getting them across the stage. In addition, I know we have a number of students that didn't quite, quite squeak their way to high school graduation, but we have a number of them enrolled in summer school. I've talked to a number of high school principals who can very quickly tell you, here's the students who didn't quite make it, how they're enrolled in summer school, and remember, we have summer school, we have the summer graduation for those kids. And I think that's a really important milestone to continue to say, high school graduation is the goal. So it was a great week last week with lots of graduations, some incredible student speakers. I thought I heard the best student speaker at McKay High School, but then I was informed no, the best student speaker was at South Salem, so I have no way to compare, but we had some really incredible, not canned, typical student graduation speeches this year. On the next page, you have our list of valedictorians and salutatorians across all of our high schools as well. So really, when you have a full page, this means these are extraordinary scholars, and to have more than one at a high school is a big deal, so if you look at the numbers, it's, it's a pretty big deal. Our kids are really excelling. So a great week, and a really huge push to our high schools as they were leading up to graduation.
Thank you, Christie. I'll let the board comment on the graduations when we do board comments, okay? All right, thank you. Now, information, items attached, you have a list of our upcoming meetings, the 28th will be the next one, it's going to be a special meeting of the school board, then we'll start our new, our new school year, 16-17, with the first board meeting on July the 12th. We don't know yet whether we'll have a work session or not that day. So keep that in your calendar, please.
And the, the summer planning on July 26th?
Is the 26th, yep.
And are we to hold that whole day, or will it be an afternoon? Do you know?
Well, if you could hold the whole day right now, it's going to be at least the afternoon, but if you could hold the whole day, it would be good, okay?
And we're hoping to have the answer out within a couple days. We're going to meet and talk about what we know about people's schedule after this meeting tonight.
Okay.
We've been polling on schedules, so. Okay, next is audience communications on non-agenda items. We have two people signed up to communicate. The limit is three minutes, please, and to have your name and address stated for the record. First is Stuart Charleston. Stuart, are you here? Yeah, okay. Podium's right up here.
Okay, three minutes, I hope I can do it.
We can go maybe three in 10 seconds.
Okay, I didn't time it, but I think it's only scribbling stuff. Anyway, thanks, my name's Stuart Charleston, it's 1999 Tacoma, Southeast Salem, and I worked for, can you hear me all right? I worked for the Salem Kaiser School District for about half of my life, and that's about 27 years, so, same hair, most of the time. You probably don't remember me, but I do see a few parents in the audience and hear that I taught some of your children. So it's been a long time. I loved my job, which was teaching physical education and coaching. I taught nine years in elementary schools where I volunteered, also leading GC relays, Awesome 3000s, Elks hoop chutes, jogathons, and carnivals. Then 18 years at the middle school level, where I coached tackle football, girls volleyball, track and, track, and was intermural coordinator. By my own calculations, I taught probably about 10,000 students over those years, so it was a great, great career that far. I worked with many outstanding teachers, coaches, and administrators, and a few that were not that outstanding. I hope that they all made, or will make, will make it to their retirement dates, because that's what I'm speaking about today. I fortunately did not. This year was supposed to be my 30th year, and my last year to teach in this district. After 17 years at the same middle school, my principal gave me the choice to stay at the school for halftime, or go to another specific school to continue full-time status. I was pressured to move, and I did, I did move. But student enrollment, enrollment predictions at the previous schools were, to me, it was a ruse, and the administrator, only months later, went back to full-time physical education for the female and the male staff. Wow, that surprised me. At my new school, which is the last part of the career I had, 2012, 2013, I started teaching and also coaching tackle football, which I love. That school, sorry to say, didn't have enough helmets for each of the players on my team at that time. Inventory for that, for P E N, also for sports at that school were very, I think the budget was fine, it's just nobody was buying the things that they needed for that school for, for sports and for physical education. Like I said, and, and I'm not going to name schools or anything like that, because that's part of what you do when you come up here to speak. At that school, two female students were on my team, our lightweight team, which they were always on teams throughout my career, and, and the team was very successful, just with two wins and two losses and one more game to go. And then everything came to a halt for me. It was six weeks, three days, and two periods, when district officials and the school security guard came into the gym while I was teaching. And they led me outside and told me that they wanted my badge and my keys, and to go collect my personal items out of my PE locker room office. I was shocked, and I was surprised, but I did, I did what they said. All I could think of was who's going to go wash the football uniforms that day that needed to be done? And they were on the floor getting ready to be washed. Of course, right after that, after I was stripped of my keys and just about everything, I went to the S K union that I was a representative for my whole career immediately, and they told me not to say anything. And that the district had a date for a meeting with, with them and our union representative in the future. That was understandable. What, what was I going to say? They told me not to say anything, what was I going to say? I didn't even have a reason to, to be, that I knew of, to be suspended. Then come to the meeting, and the meeting, one meeting I only had with the school district, it was one, with my union rep, was an interrogation. It was a by-neck detective hired by the district, which is kind of common for these kind of incidences, and I understand that completely. Then the television stations put my picture on the news channels, and the State Journal did the same thing without my picture, including the accusations of one student from the school that I will forever, to my death, deny that ever happened. Even after hiring high-profile attorneys from Portland, which they did, which is understandable, no charges and no evidence was ever found to determine or prove that I had done any harm to any student under my guidance. In loco parentis, if you know what that is, in loco parentis, that's in place of parents. That was my belief about being a teacher. My, let's see. My appointed attorney in Portland from the union told me to resign in lieu of being fired, fired. So I did resign. Unwillingly, of course, I still wanted to finish my career, but in closing, I just never had the opportunity to face any of my accusers, or one or two, or wherever they was. But that doesn't matter, just being accused is deadly, and my career was ruined. Now I'm homeless and unemployed, just like a lot of other people. One student and one accusation is one lost career. Thanks for your attention and your time to speak here tonight, and I appreciate all the time I did for the school district. Thank you. If there's any questions, probably don't even know what to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Stuart. Next we have Brian Sund.
Superintendent Perry, Chairperson Kimball, the rest of the school board, audience, staff. My name is Brian Sund, I reside at 582 Rural Avenue South, here in Salem, Oregon. I have, I've been a teacher here in the school district for 27 years, retired in 2011, five years retired and working in special ed as a substitute. Not about me. It's about Ruth Gelbrecht. She's finishing up her time in this district, and I am so proud to have worked under her fierce advocacy, her leadership, and everything that she has done to strive to make not just student services, but this whole school district a better place for our special needs students. So I just wanted to say that, and you are wonderful. And that Eric Richards, who I've known for a number of years, will be a wonderful complement to an extraordinary department within our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, that's it for audience communications on non-agenda items. Let's move on to board reports, activities in the last month or so. Anybody have anything they want to talk about? We'll go with Marty. You're looking like you got the mic ready.
I do. I was, I was just going to say, I can't remember, I'm not sure if I went to two or three graduations, because I went to the Eagle Feather one, and I can't, I was looking at my calendar, and I can't figure out if it was before, you know, the last board meeting or not. Paul's telling me three. And that was very interesting, and I'm really glad to see they do this cultural schooling for these kids. I also went to McKay, which was very awesome, shook a lot of hands, glad for a little hand sanitizer at the end. Great kids and everything. And I won't talk about the other school, because I'll cry. I'll let Paul do that for me.
Is Paul going to cry for you?
I was gonna say, wait a minute.
That I want to see.
Paul, would you cry, please?
Okay.
All right, who wants to go next?
Paul.
I'll take Paul, and then Nancy.
We were at the teen parent and early college graduation, and it was, it was very nice. And of course, it's always very moving. They supplied us, so the other high schools, Larry, if you're listening, supplied us with baskets to help us on the stage with hand sanitizer and snacks, and T-shirts and things to represent the school, which were very nice and muchly appreciated by Kelly Carlisle and Ruth Gelbrecht, who was there, and Marty and myself. But it was a very nice, very nice evening, very nice activity. I was at North, and John Bate kept falling off the stage. I don't know what the problem there was, but that was. And the art show at McKay, I don't know if anybody got over to see it, but it was great.
Thanks, Paul. Nancy.
Did you have something more to say, Marty?
Paul, I thought Paul was going to say why I was going to cry, but I guess not. It's a mystery to all of you, you'll have to wait till next year.
Yes.
Did you have a graduate?
Next year.
Next year, but he was there with his friends, so next year I'll be handing my son his diploma.
Oh, you won't be able to get through that. So I attended a meeting at South High, which was the counselors' meeting for their RAMP certification. South High was the first high school in Oregon to get RAMP certification, and I probably should know what RAMP stands for, but I don't. But do you know? Because you're on the Claggett Creek one.
Claggett Creek has got that, the only middle school in the state of Oregon.
Do you know what RAMP stands for?
I do not, but it's very impressive.
Yeah, it is very impressive. Anyway, this group that met had, had parents, teachers, counselors, students, and just had a really good understanding of all that the counseling office does. I think sometimes I've had a limited view of what they do in terms of fixing schedules and that kind of thing. You know, they do an enormous amount of mental health work, meeting with students in health classes to talk about stress reductions, all the schedules, and they've developed some kind of a scheduling process that's being expanded to other schools that make the beginning of school go smoothly where kids are actually in class, instead of standing in line trying to get their schedules changed. They talked about something I'd never really thought about, but the difficulty in meshing the CTEC schedule with the high school schedule, and getting that all together to work for students. And then the number of kids that come and go, and come and go in a school year, they had something like 400 withdrawals and re-enrollings to deal with, and just the amount of time that that takes. They are developing a, kind of a flyer that puts some numbers around what they do, and I promised them that I would bring it to you all when it's finished, because I think it really is helpful to understand what is on the plate of those counselors in our high schools and middle schools as well. I went to the community transitions graduation, which was wonderful as usual. There's nothing like the joy of those students coming across that stage, it just radiates, not to mention the joy of Ruth, which I'll, I'll mention in a moment. And then I went to the South graduation, which was marked by a number of special things for me. One, I saw a student walk across the stage in an Avid stole and an IB stole, which to me is just really, really impressive. And there was an Avid grad also who was a valedictorian, so think about a program making a difference, that's really exciting. And to end the graduation, Kelly Carlisle led the South grads in the Saxon Fight Song, because Kelly is an alum of South Salem High School, so that was quite a special moment as well. So that's what I've attended. I also wanted to just make a few comments about Ruth. Thanks, Brian, for doing that. I was talking to my husband, who worked for Ruth for many years, because I- because I had the view that in the 22 years that Ruth has been here, that this department and the needs of students and the kinds of programs and have just exploded. And she has done an enormous job. I love the word fierce. I think she was an absolutely fierce advocate for students. I've attended that community transitions graduation, I think almost every year I've been on the board. I was out of town one year. And Ruth beams as those students walk across that stage as if they were her own children. And I think that's just a reflection of her passion for this work. And to Eric, I think you've got some enormous shoes to fill, and good luck with that. I just think we all owe you just a huge debt of thanks.
Chuck, and then we'll go to Chris.
To follow up on what Nancy was saying, I had the opportunity to go to Ruth's retirement party, which was held here in this building, and just, she was not the only person retiring or being honored. A lot of great people, Lowell Smith and others too, that are retiring. But my comment was, is that, you know, I hadn't planned on speaking, but as usual, I did. And my comment to everyone there is how much we as a board really appreciate everything that, you know, that whole department does for the kids in our district. And it was just very, very obvious to me as I was listening to everybody pile onto Ruth about how loved she is and how much she's going to be missed. And so she's been a special friend of Karina's and mine. So, you know, I think that, you know, every now and then you get a champion, and she definitely has one. And so she's done a great job, and the district is better because of her. But she will be missed, and she was loved, so that was, that was a fun event. Also, I had the opportunity to go to, I guess you'd call it the Mid Valley Sports Awards that the Statesman Journal put on for the first time. And Jerry Rice was the speaker. And I was, you know, I've been to an awful lot of sports assemblies and awards, and I'm kind of going, oh, jeez, here we go. But it was great. They really did a wonderful job. It was fast-paced. They had some great video. They really honored an awful lot of the Salem Kaiser and surrounding smaller district two kids and things. And it was just a great event. And, and so I really wanted to compliment the Salem, the Statesman Journal for putting together a real quality event. I too went to the community transitions graduation, and I'm sorry, but as usual, the best graduation speaker in the district was from McNary. We did the McNary diplomas, and it was a great, a great event. And for me, it was really exciting, because, you know, this is the first year that we've had kids graduate that have been at CTEC for a year. And so we had a number of kids, as I was passing out diplomas, we had a number of kids from CTEC that were graduating from McNary, and I know that they did from basically all of the other schools. And basically, of four of the six high schools, the salutatorian or valedictorian was a CTEC kid. And so I was really proud of that. And the valedictorian at McNary is a CTEC student, so that was, that was great. An event that happens in Kaiser, but it's done for the whole district. Don Leopold in the bowling alley out there puts on what they call the Turnaround Student Awards. And that was on May 17th. And again, it's just inspirational to listen to all of the great turnaround stories that we've got in this district. And it, again, it's just a small micro, microscope of all of the kids that we've got in the district. But thanks to Don and his wife, who put that on every year at their expense. And it's a very inspirational event, and we're really, really pleased. Last night, I went to an event that Skeff put on. I know that Chris was there too. And anyway, it was more of an appreciation for their board and employees out at Red Hawk Winery. But I am just always amazed at the scope of services and things that Skeff puts on that I don't think we're aware of. And Chris, I don't know if you would agree with this or not, but it just seems like it would be a good work session or some sort of presentation to have Karina and Skeff come and just kind of give an overview of everything that they do with all of the enrichment.
Recommendation is on my list to talk about.
All right, I, you know, I mean, I'm very aware of Skeff, but it just always amazes me at the, at the scope of things that they've got. Finally, I think the last thing on my list is to say thanks to Rick and Paul for your leadership. This is probably, I guess we've got one more meeting coming up at the end of the month, but having been in leadership before, I know the time commitment and energy it takes to be chair and vice chair of this board. And you guys have given unselfishly of your time and, and energy, and it's a big deal. And I, I know I speak for everybody on the board to say thank you for your, your leadership. It's been a great year, and you guys have put a lot of time and energy into it, and I know we all appreciate it, so that's all I've got.
Thanks, Chuck. Chris?
Just wanted to mention that I continue to represent us on the W S D Budget Committee, and we did, we did that budget committee this last month. And it's a one-night process, and it's a much smaller budget and much easier to do. But the neat thing is that they've had a debt that we may all remember from the newspapers back about five or six years ago that is retiring this year, and they're all pretty excited this year that they're going to finally be out of that hole. So that, that was the highlight of the night at W S D. I went to West Salem's graduation, shook a lot of hands too. I never cease to be amazed by the excitement in the eyes of, of many of the students and the bewilderment in the eyes of other students crossing that stage to get their diploma and move on in their lives. It's always a, one of the highlights of being a board member. The Skeff thing, I wanted to mention that it was the annual meeting for the board, and what they do at that annual meeting is sort of celebrate and, and talk about the year as it's been. And Karina put together, with her staff's help, a slideshow, basically, of the kinds of things that are going on at Skeff. And it's, would it take five or 10 minutes probably to go through that list? But I think it would be five or 10 minutes well-spent for us to, to see that presentation as a board, whether it's at a work session or just even part of a regular board meeting. That, just because there's a whole lot of things that they're doing that we all may not be aware of. And I also went to the Turnaround Achievement Awards, and, and always find it fascinating to sit at a table and sit and talk to one of the students and their family that, that is getting that. And, and I think it's that interaction with the individual kid and talking to them about what turned their life, life or as a student around is always fascinating to me, because we have so many kids that do that. And it always seems to come down to a teacher, or a counselor, or somebody in the school that basically took them under their wing and said, you know, you can do better. And they realize they can, and, and they turn it around and, and do good work. So those, those are the four things I had on my list.
Thanks, Chris. And I'll go last. I attended the Roberts High School graduation at Elson Theater on last Wednesday night. It was a great event, wasn't it, Sandy? And I, Sandy probably agrees with me. I think we had the best student speakers there. So, but it was a great graduation. We had, what, around 100 kids walk across the stage? And so not all the list of graduates from Roberts were there, because a lot of them had already moved on to, to other parts of their lives and didn't attend the graduation. But they, they had a good turnout of the graduates, and every one of them was smiling and happy to go across that stage and, and get their diploma. So it was a great event. Marty, are you sitting there with a question?
I was just going to make a comment. I did attend turnaround awards too, and it's really great to see those kids changing their lives. But I also, you know, I went to McKay with Kristy, and I just wanted to say she's got two votes for the best speaker, so I think McKay's the winner.
Well, we can't top that one. I'm going to turn the mic over to Kristy for superintunist comments.
All right, so I'm just going to have Kelly do a quick little summary of some equal opportunity schools information that's kind of just in, and then we'll maybe even do a follow-up report to this, but I think it's some good news.
Absolutely, thank you. I want to congratulate our Director of High Schools, Larry Ramirez, and the work that he did together with our three high schools that participated in the Equal Opportunity Schools project this year, McNary, South, and West. I think you're aware that the AP IB Equity Project takes a deep look at who's participating in our most rigorous classes in our high schools. And not surprisingly, across the United States, there's a, there's a problem that has been reflected in the past in Salem Kaiser of not being representative of our actual student demographic in terms of who's sitting in those AP and IB classes. Typically, what we see across the United States is mostly white and Asian, upper and middle-class students. So the Equal Opportunity Schools Organization partners together with schools to see what they can do to close all of the equity gaps, one school at a time. And so our, our Director of High Schools, Larry Ramirez, worked with the high schools to make sure that they participated in the project fully. This involves staff and student surveys where they identified academic assets and aspirations that all students carry. And then from that data, identify students who somehow we missed in the process of inviting them into our most rigorous classes, and then fearlessly inviting those students to take a positive risk and sign up for an IB class or an AP class. And I'm happy to report that at McNary and at South Salem High School, they have completely closed all of the equity gaps for students along lines of race, ethnicity, and economic circumstance. And they're darn close at West Salem High School. They just have a little bit of work yet to do. So next steps involves increasing the number of rigorous courses that we are offering at each of those high schools, and preparing teachers, and providing them with enough textbooks. And thankfully, part of that project involves a generous grant from Google to help out with the additional teacher training and textbooks. So just kudos to Larry for his, his work, his leadership, for Principal Eric Jesperson, Principal Laura Tiffin, and Principal Ken Phillips for leading their staff through this very important work.
And then, second, if you have not seen the videos on our website or on our Facebook around some of our graduation work, last year we had the Parade of Honors, and this year it's expanded to many other schools. We've got pictures, video. And then our, the thing we did this year, in addition to capturing the Parade of Honors and expanding that, was to take high school kids out to their parents' work. So if you haven't, if you want to, do it when you don't want to cry. It made Larry cry, I think. But if you haven't seen those videos, you really need to get on our website or our Facebook and see those, because those were really incredible, heartfelt, awesome, all about graduation videos. So kudos to the Communications Department for that. And then, I'm not going to talk about lead testing much. The results will be up on our website, but we're beginning to work through lead testing of our schools. And finally, Ruth, I'm not going to make her stand up, because everyone, or, you know, come right here. Remember last time I made people come right here? And you guys didn't like that, because it made everyone uncomfortable. So Ruth, could you stand up? I think people have said great, nice things about you, so. Fierce, gladiator, you know, all those things. That's it for me.
Is that it? Well, before I adjourn the meeting, thank you, Ruth. We're excused.